Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started if everyone could turn their cellphones on silent, no texting, no viewing emails, and no answering phone calls. I'd like to open it up to the Joint Planning Commission Affordable Housing Committee Public Hearing. And a call to order, and Jim Moore is going to state for the record, I have my notes, Jim.
Good.
Which members of the Planning Commission and which members of Affordable Housing Committee are present?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the record, we have on the Planning Commission, we have Chairman Phil Green, Commissioner Laura Caroline present, Commissioner Estner Gonzalez-Barber present, and Commissioner Roxanne Ezert-Lofstrom present. Commissioner Hamilton is fortunately away, could not make the meeting, and as you know, we have two vacancies out of the seven Planning Commissioners, so we have in attendance four, which one way or another is a quorum of the seven. Regarding the Affordable Housing Committee, we have Mayor Kohler, who is under protocol, will be leading us through the meeting tonight. We have David Smadbeck, a public member. Scott Hoxstrasser is not present at the moment. Mallory Geitham is here, and Tony Gardner. So we have a quorum of four on the Affordable Housing Committee.
Thank you. And so, Jim, did you want to clarify some changes on the agenda?
Yes, thank you. In terms of your approval of the agenda tonight, I just wanted to point out that we got a little ahead of ourselves on Item 3 for the public hearing. Tonight, we're addressing the adoption of a Planning Commission resolution recommending that the Town Council approve the 2015 update of the 2010 housing element. We will not be reviewing, however, the second part of that sentence, the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopting findings regarding the addendum per SEQA for the Fairfax 2010 30 general plan. We will be bringing forward the addendum to the mitigated neg deck after we receive the comments back from the state at the next Planning Commission meeting, presumably in April, at the third Thursday regular meeting of the Planning Commission. So with that minor, with that change, you can approve the agenda if you so wish.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with that change. Somebody want to make a motion? Okay, I'm not making the motion, I'm asking for somebody to make a motion.
Somebody needs to make the motion first, yeah.
Did you want to make the motion, Mallory?
No.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, second? Who wants? Thank you. So we have Green, and motion, and second, Smadbeck. So with that, we'll move on, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll just read this out. The public hearing will be on the adoption of a Planning Commission resolution recommending that the Town Council approve the 2015 update of the 2010 housing element. So with that, we'll open up to Jim, and after Jim gives his presentation, we'll have an opportunity for questions, comments, suggested changes, for all of you who've read all these copious documents.
Right.
Thank you.
And also, you might want to just, when you speak, speak real clearly into the mic. We have a new modified system, we have new speakers, we have new wiring on these, and we have new remote mics here, but to make sure everyone can hear and that it's clearly articulated in the public record, please speak clearly and into the mic tonight, because we are being broadcast live, and there will also be a recording that will be posted on the town's website along with CM2. So, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm getting there, thank you. Okay, so first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody, and thank you all for being here, the members of the Planning Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee. I'd also like to introduce Amy Sinchimer, who is on the computer under the screen, being live Skyped from San Luis Obispo. We're saving greenhouse gases by not bringing her up here and sending her home. She's also our Wizard of Oz behind the screen tonight, and she will be standing by to help guide us through the update revisions and answer any questions as we go along. I'd also like to introduce Larry Kenning, our prime planning consultant of LAK and Associates in Sausalito. My name is Jim Moore, I'm the planning director for the town of Fairfax. It'll be almost six years at the end of next month. And we're here tonight, again, to consider the update to the housing element. We're going to hopefully do this in just a couple hours. I want to thank Amy for the Herculean task of getting an administrative draft to us about a little over two weeks ago, and there was a lot of heavy lifting that mostly showed up in the appendix in terms of folding in the results of the new census data. There was also a lot of heavy lifting with the new requirements from the state on analyses and tables and so forth, and she will help to guide us through the changes that went on as questions are fielded. I would also like to thank the six staff that reviewed the administrative draft in getting it ready for the public draft tonight, and that would be our town attorney Janet Colson, our deputy town attorney Katie Wazinski, Larry Kenning, our town manager Garrett Toy, and the principal planner in our Department of Planning and Building Services Linda Neal. These six folks looked through the administrative draft along with myself. We all had edits, and in a very short time of a little over two and a half weeks, we were able to massage this into shape where it is tonight. This has been a collective effort, and now it's before you as a collective effort, so I invite you to take ownership of this update and this document. And again, it's a pretty straightforward process, so we're hoping that we can get through this in just a couple of hours. To paraphrase the staff report that was put out on Friday, sent to you all and posted on the website, I'm just going to do a quick overview. Our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, which the mayor just opened, and to adopt a resolution recommending that the Town Council submit the draft housing element to the State Office of Housing and Community Development for its required review. If you recall, as mentioned in the staff report, subsequent to being told to get going with this update by council, just a little over a month ago, a month and three days ago in this room, we held a pre-draft workshop, which is required by the state. And on this list of the sequence of going on, it's the last item there, and those comments that were received from the two back-to-back sessions on the evening of January 22nd were both provided as an attachment in the staff report, and it's also the very last item in the appendix to the updated housing element. So you can see how quickly the events have folded into the actual document. To just remind you of what was mentioned in the housing element and what was mentioned at the workshop and in the prior public meetings on the philosophy going forward with meeting the new RENA, the only thing that's happening in this housing element update is the rolling over of the existing opportunity sites contained in the current housing element and adding 16 second units, whether they be existing informal or new ones coming along. And that would be 16 units over the next eight-year planning period. So that would be an average of two per year going forward of second units, and those second units might be units already in existence. So, another bit of news that wasn't known when the staff report was put together, we have confirmed through Amy, thank you Amy, that the state is going to require us to implement an ordinance prior to adoption of this housing element, the final adoption presumably in May by the Town Council. We are going to have to adopt an ordinance addressing what is referred to as Senate Bill 2, which stipulates all municipalities must accommodate zones that allow emergency shelter for the homeless to occur. So, parallel to this process, our attorneys have begun just today drafting that ordinance, and it will be going through the routing, which starts in the Planning Commission, and then gets sent up to Town Council for a first reading, a second reading, and then goes into effect 30 days after the reading. We simply have to have that second reading of formal adoption prior to May 31st to make the window that we're shooting for. And that window, again, the goal in this whole exercise, if you recall, is to have the town adopt the update by May 31st, and what that will accomplish is it will get us on an eight-year cycle. We won't have to do this again in four years. It will be 2022 before we start to think about it for the planning period that begins in 2023. Having said that, having done three housing elements in the last three years in town of Fairfax, I would be very happy if we didn't have to do another adoption for eight years. It's an enormous amount of staff time, it's an enormous amount of cost to the town to pay for the consultants and the heavy lifting that goes on with creating this document. And I think we're there. Again, we're rolling over the opportunity sites, we're adding 16 units, so it's a pretty straightforward process. So before we actually get into discussing the review of the document, I just want to review for a moment some tables that were presented at the workshop, and actually in the joint meeting that was held back in November, we had some tables. This is the actual seven-slide slideshow that was at the workshop, I'm just going to breeze through it, talking about what our responsibilities are. This was the, the top line that's been redacted was the Cycle 3 RENA that goes away, the 64 goes away, but our current RENA of 61 comes in, and we still have to accommodate the most immediate last RENA, Cycle 4 of 108, so our new total to accommodate is 169. This was an affordability graph, that if anyone has questions later on, is the most recent HUD numbers of the income limits and the affordability ranges for Marin County as of 2014, and this is updated by HUD periodically. But this, when someone says what is affordable, this is the table that talks about what's affordable in Marin County. I'm sorry if you, I'm paraphrasing, I'm paraphrasing what is in essence I'm trying to convey in the staff report. And if you could all hold your questions till after my presentation, it'll help us get through to begin with. I'm sorry, Kiki, thank you. So, this again showed how we met the last cycle, and then this is the magic table that is echoed in this housing element update. Our RENA for these cycles, four and five, is 169. The previous zone parcels were 21. The ones we permitted since 2006 are eight, so that brings 169 down to 140. And if we subtract the 16 second units we're folding in, there's the magic 124 that we've already accommodated with the existing opportunity sites. So I just wanted to end on the staff report introduction on where we left off at the workshop. So now, in terms of reviewing the actual document, Amy is here to field any questions, but the, you will notice in the document that was sent out to you, commissioners and committee members and to the public is on the town's internet site, some of the previous sections and/or the tables were moved to the appendix or eliminated, and some other tables that are now required by the state were created. And once again, Amy's here to help us walk through that, and in the document itself, you'll see these, what is usually a blue line that's explaining, for example, in order to document updates since the 2010 housing element amended in 2013 and '14, new text is shown underlined. In addition, a description of the extent of the changes to a section are provided in italics at the beginning of the section. But basically, the document has three parts. It has the narrative in the beginning, it has the goals, policies, and programs in the middle, and that's where the rubber meets the road. That's really the gist of the housing element. And then lastly, it has the appendix. What we're looking for from you all tonight are edits that are substantive or are clarifying, but not edits hopefully that are style-oriented. So rather than wordsmithing for style, we're looking for clarifications or important issues relative to policy as far as your edits are concerned. And we will be taking notes, Larry will be taking notes. This session is being recorded both in video and audio and with the minutes clerk. And let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. You'll notice in the bulk of the narrative at the beginning of the document, the plates that show the opportunity sites. We had intended to revise those plates so that each one showed the current zoning and the proposed zoning. And we just caught the other day the fact that while our graphics person had revised those plates, we're not sure where the breakdown came, but two of those plates still lack the current zoning. So we will be going back, and for example, on Site 2 Tenolima, it should say current zoning, proposed zoning, and on the Site 6 on the east side, it should say current zoning and proposed zoning. So those are the types of edits we're really looking for tonight. And also, before we get into hearing you all on your review of this draft public document, I wanted to jump ahead to the appendix for a moment and point out a couple of very interesting pieces of the demographic feedback we've gotten. And I remember Affordable Housing Committee member Tony Gardner very astutely said, I think both at the workshop and at our previous joint meeting in November, that you really think that we should, you know, pay attention to what those facts are telling us. So I wanted to just point out a couple of things. On page HB5, Table B3 in the appendix, population age characteristics, it's very interesting. The age group between 20 and 44 years of age went down by eight and a half percent in this town since the 2000 census. And conversely, the age group between 60 and 74 went up by nine percent. In other words, we have 628 fewer people between 20 and 44, and we have 668 more people between 60 and 74. Now you might say the 20 to 44-year-olds got older and got out of that category, but interestingly enough, the 45 to 59 in between there stayed relatively the same, at three percent. So we have an aging of the population. Likewise, on page HB16, under Table B13, household income trends, if you look at the income range between $25,000 and $99,000, we lost 815 people in that income range, and we grew 825 people in the above $100,000 range. And lastly, if you look at, I think I jumped ahead a little too fast here, if you look at Table B8, excuse me, I jumped past it, resident employment by industry, very interesting. If you look at the market decreases in the category of employment, if you look at the major ones, wholesale trade, retail trade, and arts, entertainment, recreation, accommodation, and food services, that went down by 11 percent. Those are more blue-collar jobs. Went down by 478 fewer people in Fairfax that are working in those areas of employment categories, and yet, if you look at the main increases, which were professional, scientific, management, administrative and waste management services, education, health and social services, or public administration, which I'm sure everyone will be great, very happy about, we went up by 644 more jobs, or approximately 15 percent. So, we went down in blue-collar jobs by 11 percent, we went up in high-paying jobs by 15 percent. What does that mean? That means over 25 percent of the town has really changed in the last 10 years. So that's my entree into why we're here tonight. Housing is really necessary for folks that are getting squeezed out of the market. Gentrification is occurring in this town with or without housing elements or state mandates. So with that, let's start on the narrative section. And after we get done, let's see, after we get done, I'll give you a brief heads-up on what the next steps are. And by the way, one little housekeeping point of order, after we do get done with the review of the three parts of the housing element update, Mayor Kohler will adjourn the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission, Phil Green, if you would take it upon yourself, assuming we get to this point, to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution recommending that the Town Center, sorry, Town Council, adopt or approve the housing element and send it up to the state. That'll be our last bit of formal business before we adjourn. So without further ado, we open it up for review, and I can scroll through the document when we need to get to certain parts.
So I think, let me just check for a point of order is, I think the way we would normally do this is the members of the Planning Commission, the Affordable Housing Committee would bring their comments, then we would open it up to public comment, and then bring it back. So we'll start out with members of the Commission or the Affordable Housing Committee have, I mean, I have several comments, but that's me.
Okay.
And I will wait till other people speak.
Okay.
Tony?
You got to hit, yeah.
Tony Gardner with the Affordable Housing Committee. I just wanted to add to some of the points that Jim made coming out of the needs assessment appendix. I just had a chance to start reading it today, but you know, those were interesting points, and there's some other interesting points. The appendixes, appendices make clear that, that due to the lack of affordable housing and continued reliance on cars to drive out of town to work or to drive into town for lower-wage workers, that we're going to continue to have greater congestion on the roads, and that one solution to that would be to provide more affordable housing in town. Then, on, let's see, on page HB17?
HB27?
HB17.
Oh, the appendix.
HB17. You can see that even though there's been a huge increase in the number of households end of a two-bedroom rental is $2,300, the high end is $3,600, and so on. above $100,000 per year gross income, we still have a lot of very low-income and low-income And so, I'm just trying to point out that there's a huge gap between the incomes of households in Fairfax. those who are very low-income or low-income and the rents that are available in Fairfax. We have 815, well, actually, as of 2010, it may be less now, I don't know, but 815 very
Right.
And so, you know, it'd be nice if we could do more about it. low-income households and 305 low-income households. I know that there are a lot of barriers to that. And when you compare that to the average rents on HB, page HB21? So those are my only comments. And those kind of add to what you already said about what the needs are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hang on a second.
Other members have comments, or Peter?
Forgive me, give me a second here, 21.
And you have to turn, speak into it and press the button.
Okay, one, as of December 2014, the lowest-cost one-bedroom rental was $1,550.
A suggestion in the housing element, the descriptions of the parcels that are the
I'm sorry, where are you, Tony?
opportunity sites, I think they're identified by the parcel number, but I think it would
On HB21.
HC21.
HB.
HB21.
B is four.
I'm sorry.
also be good to just add the addresses of those parcels, because I think most people
Table B18.
are not going to recognize the parcel numbers necessarily. And I don't know what page that's on. And I just wanted to clarify too, that the, it looks like the sort of controversial figures that were in the tables in the prior housing element, those have all been corrected as far as the correct acreage and so forth. I had a question too, on the Table A, talking about the regional housing needs in the staff report and the allocations, and these look like these are handed down by, or mandated by RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And also, kind of dovetailing on Tony's comments.
Please try to speak in there.
Sure. So on page four of the staff report, Table A, it's looking like RENA is wanting us to target to produce 54 above moderate and 23 above moderate housing units, and I'm wondering if we can, if we have to stick to that ratio, or could we, in our efforts to update the housing plan and zoning, can we try to create more moderate, more low-income or very low-income units? Because according to the, these figures, moderate income begins at about $123,000 per year annual income, and it seems to me like the biggest need for housing is really at the lower end, extremely low, a very low and low end. And so I'm wondering if we can, if we have to stick to these ratios in the RENA numbers as we move forward, or if we can be a little more assertive in getting more low, very low, or extremely low income?
Amy, did you hear that?
Yes, and Katie, Mary?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So, the answer is yes, in terms of what you actually build. I believe that quite a few of the sites that are in the list would allow some lower income, you could build low-income units there even though they're assigned to moderate or above moderate in this table. It is important in the housing element to show that you have zoning in place to meet the numbers for all the categories, but when, that is just to show that you can accommodate the numbers when actual projects happen. It is, aside from the lower-income sites that have the minimum density placed on them, there are just two sites, there's a lot more leeway on the other sites.
And it's, the state's establishing a minimum, if we want to go beyond that, it's within our purview, right?
Definitely, yeah. And so, but I'm thinking even more of some of the mixed, the sites that have commercial and residential potential. I think there's a wider range on some of those sites to accommodate a lot of different income categories.
Right. And Peter, just to fill you in on some of the discussion that's happened at the previous meetings, there has been discussion about codifying small units requirements in the commercial upstairs units, for example, as a way of increasing the affordability, putting a cap on the size of those second units. Once we codify this, this language here is to satisfy the state, but we can go, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, or anybody else, we can go beyond those requirements in helping to promote truly affordable units by decreasing the allowable size. And we had all along intended to promote efficiency units that are small. You can actually do one units and down, one-bedroom units down to like 400 square feet or believe it or not. So there had been a lot of discussion, and we still have purview, once we go through this exercise with meeting the state's requirement. Is that not correct, Amy?
Yeah, the important thing is that you have the zoning space relatively consistent, so you have the inventory to build that variety of units. And because some of your sites have, like I said, you could build a variety of unit types on them and therefore a variety of income levels.
Right.
You have a lot of flexibility in how you do that. And the housing element only requires you to zone for the units, not to build them. So building them is, you know, how it plays out throughout the banking period.
Right, thank you.
I have a question. So that, that is to take, wait a minute, that is to take care of...
And Peter, just to fill you in on some of the discussion that's happened at the previous meetings, there has been discussion about codifying small units requirements in the commercial upstairs units, for example, as a way of increasing the affordability, putting a cap on the size of those second units. Once we codify this, this language here is to satisfy the state, but we can go, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, or anybody else, we can go beyond those requirements in, in helping to promote truly affordable units by decreasing the allowable size. And we had all along intended to promote efficiency units that are small. You can actually do one units and down, one-bedroom units down to like 400 square feet or believe it or not. So, there had been a lot of discussion. And we still have purview, once we go through this exercise with meeting the state's requirement. Is that not correct, Amy?
Yeah, the important thing is that you have the zoning space relatively consistent, so you have the inventory to build that variety of units. And because some of your sites have, like I said, you could build a variety of unit types on them and therefore variety of income levels.
Right.
You have a lot of flexibility in how you do that. And the housing element only requires you to zone for the, the units, not to build them. So, building them is, you know, how it plays out throughout the banking period.
Right, thank you.
I have a question to that, that is to take, wait a minute, that is to take care of low-income housing. What if we wanted to just do low-income housing and, and not have the other two? Do we just code it as if we have regular housing and build all, if we wanted to, low income? Or can we just substitute and say we want all low or middle income, or just low income? Does it matter how we set it up?
It matters for the purposes of the housing element document, but when you actually build projects, that's, that's not something that HCD is going to say you can do it one way or the other.
Or you...
Besides what the zoning says.
I think you just asked Peter's question in a slightly different way, and the answer is still the affirmative.
Okay, because I thought we needed a, you know, just to take more, if we wanted more housing, but I'm just saying, if we just wanted all.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Let me, okay, I, I'm still a little confused, and maybe if you...
I'm sorry, Peter, can you pull the mic closer?
Yes. So, in terms of the housing element, do we, and, and this may be different than enacting the actual zoning, is HCD saying that we can't zone for higher ratios of extremely low and very low and low-income housing as part of our zoning ordinance? And that we have to maintain this ratio of moderate and above moderate to the lower income stuff? Or is that something that we have to, I'm just curious where we address that? Do we, can we address that in the zoning ordinance, or in the general plan? Or do we have to leave the, those two things alone in order to meet the requirements of HCD?
Well, there are quite a few programs in the element that do address some zoning that needs to happen in order to implement the housing element. And that is probably the process we are already familiar with, we've already been going through to evaluate the proposed zoning from the general plan and then to decide what gets put into place. And there is a timeframe associated with some of those actions in the housing element. I don't know if you want to go to the program section now, so I'm not sure if I did, that is part of your question.
Amy, can I interrupt? Amy, can I interrupt? This is Barbara, Mayor. So, just for clarification, Peter is a new member of the council. He was just appointed. So, he hasn't been part of all these discussions. So, I think the real question is, or the way I understand what you said is that we need to stay with these numbers to meet them for the housing element. Potentially, when a development project comes in, we could try to require more low-income or extremely low income. But in the zoning itself, you don't zone and say what types of housing, correct?
Not, usually zoning doesn't get that specific. It usually says, you know, multifamily is allowed with either permit or conditionally and single family, you know, things like that, but it doesn't say what income levels are allowed in, in a zone.
I have a, I have, I have a logic question. The, the plan is, in the coming few years, to have 16 more second units. And the Planning Commission in the last year has approved two, so it's a good, you know, it's a likelihood that, that the 16 could be approved in the next eight years. But in planning those units and in holding those hearings, you know, we take into consideration details like parking and setbacks and ceiling heights and all kinds of things. Do we now also need to take into consideration the income level of the rental of a second unit?
No, we've actually done that in our analysis in the housing element. So, similarly, we do our best to predict what could we go and that includes the second units. And so, we looked at rents, community and in the surrounding area, and actually, a lot of other communities in Marin who have done the same kind of analysis. And our reviewer at HCD, Melinda, is very excited about this in Marin County. So, she pointed me to Mill Valley and a couple others. And you've been able to demonstrate, we believe, you know, hopefully she'll agree when she reviews it, that you do have some studios and one-bedroom that are for some of the lower income categories. And I believe, I can look up the table, but I think we have the units placed in moderate and low, because that's what I'm writing down.
Yes.
Yeah, so, it's sort of a conservative approach that we're saying some of them could be affordable to those of low income, but also some would be for moderate. And these are very small units, so they're relatively affordable.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it sounds like the, the state requirements are that we have to list a certain amount that are above moderate, but could we include a policy statement that we, we would actually prefer that they be, you know, low, low income?
Definitely. And actually, we have at least one program that relates to second units that says that if they are affordable, then they can receive some incentives. I wonder if we looked that one up?
And while you're looking that up, if I could chime in, we're sort of jumping into the goals, policies and programs, but so be it. Under H, program H6 dot 1 dot 2 dot 6, we added the language about junior second units. And the boilerplate language that we use was from Nevada's ordinance that has been codified. And for the junior second units, Tony, we've stipulated that there would be a maximum of 500 square feet, where the code right now allows second units up to 700 square feet. So, moving in the junior second direction is exactly what I think you all were talking about, at least with regards to the second units, is pushing towards the smaller units in the more affordable range.
So, my comment is clearly if we as a town and a community want to allow for more low-income, extremely low-income housing, we can do that. The danger is sort of to only heavy load development at one end of the spectrum, whether it's extremely high-income housing or low-income housing, becomes a sustainability issue. And the reason the state got involved is if markets do what they want, we tend to crowd out low-income residents from being able to afford to live in a lot of communities. Too much on the other end puts a financial stress on towns that a lot of the public services no longer become sustainable. So, the tax base, the density levels for the schools, for the public service works becomes unsustainable. So, you don't necessarily want to shift all of the above-moderate housing to low-income. You can still add the others, but keep the above-moderate as well, because you need both of that to maintain that sort of financial sustainability in, in Fairfax as well as other communities.
We do have that. And we're kind of erring on the side of, I was looking with a friend of mine for, she's going to buy a house today, simple little two-bedroom house, $800,000. You know, we have plenty of those. And, and to make it a little more equitable, we may have to, you know, just take the average and push it down a little bit more towards low and middle housing. I mean, we don't, I don't even know if there is middle housing, you know, it's kind of high and then some low, but it's already very unfair in terms of, you know, it's very hard for people to buy houses in Fairfax, besides it hardly anywhere for sale. When they do, they get grabbed up and then it's a bidding war. But we don't, you know, we don't have enough to balance on the other side. So, I'm not saying that we don't build, you know, we're not, we're not going to put any major housing in, but on, on the higher end and the middle end. But I think we really have to focus a little more on affordable housing.
I think what I heard Tony suggest was not related to second units. I think what Tony was asking for, if you don't mind me helping, was just where we have these goals is, we have a goal that states something to the effect that Fairfax has a goal to support extremely low and low-income housing to the extent feasible. I'm not really sure what language you're thinking of, but I think just a general goal, we don't, I wouldn't advocate for trying to change these numbers so much because I agree with Roxanne, but also the idea is that if you start requiring that, no developers will come. Part of what they want is to have a mix. So, in order, because you need subsidies to do all affordable housing, and it's very difficult to all subsidize. So, what you want is a mix for people to come and do this work. So, I think, is it possible to have a, a general goal statement that doesn't necessarily require us to change numbers here or something like that? And I'm not really sure of how the language would go.
Amy, any thought?
Yes, that definitely is possible.
Okay, so...
Do you have a thought about how to word such a thing?
Well, this is my, my suggestion is, we take your recommendation under consideration and we go back and we try to craft some language as we take this up to the town council in March, and we try to craft some language to that effect.
I think that sounds amenable.
And I get the drift. You want to push in the more affordable direction, while we want to meet these target ranges with our RENA quota, but we want to make it loud and clear that our effort in meeting these numbers in absolute terms is to address to the greatest extent possible true affordability.
Equitable, yes.
Now, take your finger off.
Just once.
Okay, all right. You said something about, can you say a little more about the emergency, the emergency shelter for the homeless, what those requirements are?
Amy, would you like to chime in about SB 2?
Sure, can you repeat the question?
She wants to know a little bit more about what our state requirements are in adopting an ordinance to allow emergency shelter by right without a conditional use permit prior to the final adoption of this.
Yeah, so, Senate bill two was passed in 2007, so in the last housing element, we were required to include a program that said that, I believe it said within a year, the town would adopt an ordinance to allow emergency shelters in at least one zone without any discretionary review, and that is what that law requires. And since then, HCD has changed their requirements to say that everyone who certifies their, who submits their housing element or certification in this cycle that we're in now, needs to have that ordinance in place in order to get certified. And it needs to happen before adoption, which is a technicality, but those who have been involved so far know that the goal for the town is to adopt by day 31st, and that's in order to restore the longer thing here next time. So, that's the short version. And then we have a program in the housing element that has the details of what zones we're proposing. The town staff is working, like Jim said, right now on the details of that ordinance.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Amy? I think it's great, but could you explain to me what an emergency homeless shelter is? Is that something that could be available for one night or two nights? Or what actually is an emergency homeless shelter?
Yeah, so it's, I think what most of us think of as a homeless shelter where it's for someone who really needs a place to go, it's not a long-term option. The state law says that it is a maximum, within one calendar year, someone can stay there a maximum of 180 days. And there are other standards that the town can adopt, in particular, along with the operation of a shelter. And just to be clear, the requirement is that you allow a shelter, not that you actually build one, but if you want to put standards in your code for the, if a shelter gets developed, then that is your program.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
And Amy, can you remind me, I think in the last housing element data, in the appendix, we had six or seven homeless. What was the count this time?
This time it's 20.
20. So, presumably, if we were going to allow a shelter by right or without conditional use permits required, we'd be looking at a shelter that would at least have 20 beds, and I assume it would be on a first-come, first-served basis with whatever other program elements that provider stipulated, correct?
Yeah, the whole details are really, how it operates, most of that is up to the town or whoever that allows a shelter or is being, being with the town. There are a couple of things that the state specifically looks for. They don't want you to say that you can't, that shelters can't be farther apart from each other than, sorry, let me try to say this in a better way. There is a requirement that you can't say that the distance between shelters has to be greater than 300 feet. Some jurisdictions have said 1,000 feet or greater, and the state wants to see a maximum of 300-foot distance. And then they also look at what kind of parking requirements you put into place, and generally that is, they like it to be consistent with other uses that are allowed in the same zones that are somewhat similar. So, for a shelter, that would be something like a large place of assembly, like a church or a community center or something like that. So, you just need to make sure your parking is consistent. And then in terms of the number of beds, there isn't a requirement for number of beds for the shelter. What HCD is looking for is that you satisfy, you have enough vacant or underdeveloped land in those zones, that if someone wanted to build a shelter or more than one shelter over time, the need to be accommodated. So, it could be one shelter, 20 beds, it could be two shelters of 10 beds. They're not going to hold you to those kind of details. But if you do want to put a maximum number of beds in your zoning, that is an option. And I would say they would probably be looking for at least 20 beds as a maximum in Fairfax. But we can check with them on that, if that's something that you want to get nailed down.
I wanted to ask, I'm not sure what definition this document requires for homeless shelter, but most of the programs listed in this chart are actually, would be transitional housing or permanent supportive housing projects, in a few cases, affordable housing. And we actually, in Marin County, have, I believe, three or four emergency shelters.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know. If you have any direct edits, if we've said, if we listed it incorrectly, that would be helpful. But this, that chart, I think you're referring to the homeless facilities, they will pass just...
That's right.
Kind of everything that's out there, more of a resource, actually, rather than something that has to go along with that ordinance. But we were sort of erring on the side of giving that information to the public so that they can use it.
Okay, yeah, and it says homeless facilities, so then it would be more correct then.
So, I have a few edits, if that's okay? It's actually quite a few. So, I'll start with what I think are, I don't know, I've got substantive and then sort of just edits, but I'll start with what I found in error on page HB 12. So, the parcel at the bottom of that page, 002-181-05, is actually -03. I checked that on previous tables that we had corrected. So, and if you just look at it also, the one following is 04. So, that's an error on that table. Jim, did you find that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then on page HB 13, on the Christ Lutheran Church at the bottom of the page?
Yes.
And I would like to make this change throughout. Where we have, it's 20 acres and proposed zoning is PDD. I think we want to say a note saying limited to two acres only. And I found that in several places, so I can tell you where that is, but I think that's our goal, is we limit it to two acres rather than the entire 20 acres.
Yeah, and we appreciate any editing in that regard, because we did try to stipulate that as much as we could. This is a good eye. It is, it is mentioning the totality of that APM number at this point, so I think a note would help clarify that, yes.
Yes, okay. So, then, okay, on page HB 14, and this is, at the top of pages HB 14, 15, 16, and 17, across the top, you have site name, APN, acreage, zoning. I believe it should be proposed zoning on all of those. This is just the header. That's not current zoning, it's proposed zoning. For example, so the header should say proposed zoning, not zoning. Because we're going to change, there's no CC right now. We're going to change all those, right?
Are you following, Amy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's, that's on the top of each page.
Got it.
Again, now here's a bigger question on page HB 15, where we get to School Street Plaza. At one time, we had talked about... Street Plaza. At one time, we had talked about not having PDD for the entire site. And that was, in a sense, because we heard more about what the owner was thinking of, and at least Jim, you and I had talked about potentially not having the entire site PDD. So I think we should have some sort of a note to that effect. And I don't know how we would craft it, or say may limit to less acreage, something like that.
Okay.
So that seemed to me to be the way to make sure that we kind of handle that, so that people don't think we're...
Okay.
So I would just do that. Then on page eight seventeen, at the bottom of that page, you have this thing that says totals, and you have vacant sites and opportunity sites, and you have a bunch of numbers. When I add all those up, it comes to a hundred and forty four. And the number should be a hundred and forty is what we're gearing towards. So where the extra four are, I do not know.
I'm sorry, Phil, we can't hear you.
You need to press.
One of them, one of them appears to be in the note seventeen second units. I think it was sixteen, though.
Ah, thank you, that's one of them.
Yeah.
Two per year for eight years.
Above ordinary vacant sites should go up to twenty-one. We didn't pick that in it, so those would balance each other out.
I'm not sure what you just said, Amy. What did you say? So if we take the seventeen second units and change that to sixteen, now we're down to a hundred and forty-three. What are you talking about for the forty-five? Are you changing the number?
Under vacant sites, that should be twenty-one.
So then we're back to a hundred and forty-four. So the number we're looking for here, the total number should be a hundred and forty, not a hundred and forty-four.
We'll double-check the numbers.
And that's based on all the tables that you have. The number should be a hundred and forty. So somehow, there's an extra four in that summary below there.
And we'll check it.
Okay. So, moving on, and I hope this isn't making everyone crazy.
This is great. That's why we're here.
Going to page H eighteen, I think it's page H eighteen, oh, yes. Okay, you go to the, the second full paragraph, and again, we have the underline, which talks about Christ Lutheran Church. And I think where it says Christ Lutheran Church site at twenty-six twenty-six Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, I would have in parentheses, limited to two acres of the twenty-acre site.
It's actually, yes, okay, okay.
Okay.
Can I add something to that? Could it be limited to the two acres nearest to Sir Francis Drake?
Yes. It's actually stipulated in other parts in that way.
We don't have, we don't have this thing about near Sir Francis Drake. It's somewhere else in the document. You talk about limited to two acres, but I don't, I read this kind of carefully. I don't recall it saying near Sir Francis Drake. So if we're going to make that change, we should do a check throughout. They're going to go through and look for that. Okay, so then, looking at page H nineteen, near the bottom, where it talks about School Street Plaza again, site four, I would make the same change where we're talking about limiting to part of the site.
The split, potential split.
Yeah, and I don't know what the right language would be, but I think you've got the concept.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's right here, but these are kind of details that only somebody with my ability would pick up. Then on page H twenty-three, sorry, I need to talk into this. Oh, this is where I think you mentioned the caption. Well, again, on that caption, where you're talking about School Street Plaza, I think we would do the same sort of caveat dealing with a portion of the site. And then...
Leaving open the option of splitting it, but remaining, residual of PDD remaining to accommodate the nine units.
Right, yeah. I'm not, I just mean, we wanted to have that flexibility.
Got it, got it, I got it.
And then, and I found this throughout, and maybe it's an error on my part, but if you go to the caption, which talks about the sixteen second units, and then it goes on to say, without the requirement of the suppression sprinkler systems.
Yes.
I believe every time you say that, it should be in the non-wooey zone.
Actually, we had, gosh, I can't remember. I think we had discussed relaxing the sprinkler requirement even beyond that, where it was not a clear hazard. But we can go back and double-check that.
Yeah, so I've, I'm going to call note where I saw that in a few places, but that was my thought.
Okay.
Okay.
Isn't that, isn't that kind of a moving target, because the fire department sort of has to approve that or not?
No, well, when we adopted the, the new fire code, we actually made some changes that said in the non-wildlife urban interface zone, we would not require sprinklers, correct?
That's right, up to thirty percent.
So that was already done by the council.
Right, we had that latitude.
But I'm not sure if you wanted to go further with the second units, but just right here, it's saying it's already without that.
I'll, we'll check the language.
Okay. Then, again, on H twenty-seven, where you have School Street Plaza, again, I think we want to talk about a portion of the site PDD, or however you're going to do that.
Split potential, yep.
And, and then on H twenty-nine, you already mentioned that you're going to put in the current zoning.
Right.
And I didn't catch the other one, darn it. But, but you already caught it.
Oh, wait a minute. I thought you went through this with a fine tooth, sorry.
And then on H thirty, you talk about, due to the relatively short time period between the adoption of the housing element, blah, 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 the town has been successful in implementing only a few of the policies. I think it's worthwhile to add some language that, in addition to that, we had a referendum, and we had, we went ahead and repealed the ordinance that did the rezone, because it wasn't just short timeframe. And you have some language elsewhere in the document that kind of speaks to that, and you could probably steal that language. But I think that's important. I mean, to maybe somebody like Amy, this may not be very important, but that was one of the reasons that we've had a lot of delay in moving forward, and I think it should be documented in the housing element.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got a pretty good summary of it.
I know it's somewhere in the document. I read it. So then...
Page H three, it appears to be, and...
I'm sorry, Phil, can't hear you.
Page H three, discussions public process.
Oh, great, okay. Right, on H three, Barbara.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. So then on page H thirty-seven, again, that program at the top is talking about the Lutheran Church. I would have that same caveat for the only two acres of the twenty-acre site near Sir Francis Drake, or whatever we're going to do there. Do you see that one, Jim?
Yeah, got it.
Okay. Then on page H forty-one, and this is where, H forty-one, program H two point one, point six one, identify rezon and provide appropriate standards for homeless shelters. I would make sure and add the word emergency homeless shelters.
So, point of work.
Yeah, can I jump in right there?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, the programs in this table on the left-hand side are from the previous housing element. So we don't, we would make edits to them in the program section, not in this table. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, however, I remember in the previous housing element, we were talking about emergency homeless shelters at that time. So I think, I agree with you, but I don't agree, because I think it was an error from the past. And I will tell you that there are certain people in this town that have been very concerned about the term homeless shelters. And when I pointed out, we're talking about emergency homeless shelters, which is maybe not permanent, that sort of helped. So I hear what you're saying, but I think it may have been an error from the previous one.
So, to make sure I understand, Barbara, you're saying that it was erroneously stated this way in the past document?
Well, Amy's saying that this is from the past document.
Right.
And I'm saying, I think it was wrong, because we had emergency homeless shelters in the previous one.
So we'll check to make sure this language is exactly how it was in the prior document.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Just for clarification on that, do you mean that it should be in the program section, housing program section, page H fifty-nine?
I think I have it in there, too. I'll get to that.
Actually, this language changed quite a bit in the new program, that this, this modified quite a bit. It doesn't have the total acreage. It's, the language is much different.
Okay.
The policy is the same. The program language has changed. And actually, the new language doesn't say emergency, because by the time this document's adopted, that ordinance will be in place. So we don't have to list it as something we're going to do. It will be done by the time this document becomes approved, adopted.
Okay, well, let's, okay, well, thanks. And we'll move on. And Phil, why don't we, when we get to that page, we'll make sure we cover that. So on page H forty-three, under the H two point one, point six seven, the town actually committed, it was about sixteen thousand six hundred, to this year-round permanent homeless shelter. We actually didn't give, we committed, and it was more money than ten thousand. And maybe I'm just being picky, but we're the only town in Fairfax, in, we're in that gave anything.
So it's, it's committed, not gave, and the total amount so far?
It was like sixteen six, I believe.
So we'll check, check them out.
Yeah, Garrett can probably tell you. He's right behind you. Okay. And then on page H forty-five, again, yeah.
Can I add to that one? You know, a town council member also participates in the county-wide continuum of care policy group. And that's Renee. So I don't know if it's worth putting in here or not, but, you know, the town does participate in the county-wide homeless planning process.
Okay, great, thank you. We didn't know, actually, if someone was still...
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you. And then we move to page H forty-five, on H four point one, point one, point one, again, School Street Plaza, if we could change that to the portion?
Sorry, change that to what?
It's, again, talking about just part of School Street Plaza.
But again, the, the left column is the language that was in the prior document.
Okay, so maybe it's okay.
So we can't, we can't retroactively change that. It's the column on the right that's addressing what happened in the prior, to the prior programs.
Okay, thank you.
Well, perhaps that, perhaps that would be the place to insert language about it, zoning only being a partial change of zoning to PDD.
Okay.
Because that is, I think, one of the things that is moving forward.
Split potential.
Okay, so I think my next change is the same thing that's from the old one. H forty-eight, is that from the old one? I was just going to make a language change.
Yeah, anything on the left is from prior document.
And then going, I think I'm into the new stuff now, H forty, fifty-three, oh, maybe this is old stuff. H fifty-three, is this from the old housing element?
Everything on the left, left column.
This whole table.
The whole table.
Okay, all right, well, then I'll withdraw that one.
Okay.
And then, so H fifty-five, H fifty-six, okay, no, H fifty-five, this has got to be new, because this is talking about the new fee. This wasn't in the old housing element.
There wasn't in new fee. It was supposed to, we were supposed to...
It wasn't there?
Yes, it was.
The program number column on the far left, and then the language, actual program language, the second column over are from the old housing element, and then everything else on the right is new. So you can edit the two row in columns.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, then I've got some, when we get to that part in the new part, I'll make some changes there. Okay, so then, moving on to page H sixty-two, which is in the new Okay, so what you have is program H point one, point one, point one, point four, preserve existing lower-income units. And you have that the town does not currently have any deed-restricted at-risk units at this time. Yes, we do. Well, or we do have deed-restricted units, but they're not at risk. Bennett House and Creekside.
Correct.
So, do you think we should add that we do have deed-restricted, that are not considered at risk because they have these long-term leases, or?
We can't. We discussed those in the appendix.
I know, that's where I saw it. So I guess my point is, a lot of people won't read the appendix, appendices. And I think it's important to note that we do have these two already in town.
Sure.
So if we could add those and then go on to say they're not at risk.
So, so if I understand correctly, for example, and we can follow your take here, the town does not currently have any deed-restricted at-risk units at this time, colon, however, it does have two deed-restricted projects, blah, 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 that do not appear to have any danger.
I think I would just steal the language that you have in the appendix and put it there, because I think people would want to know that we do have these.
Okay.
So I would just steal the language from the appendix and put it there.
Or you could just say, the town has currently two deed-restricted properties, Bennett House and Creekside. However, these do not appear to be at risk at this time. You could say something like that.
Good.
Can I ask, what is, you know, the vest pocket housing, is that deed-restricted?
No, those are, those are done with, they were done with community development block rent funding. And so there's, there's ties with that money and any further loans that they get from the bank, that typically will keep them affordable for a very long period of time.
And if I'm not mistaken, they're owned by the housing authority, right?
Yes.
So...
That one is, vest pocket is.
Well, I...
Yeah, so that analysis really looks at, those are the projects that received some kind of funding when they were built, and usually they have some sort of expiration for the time that they need to be affordable. And so housing authority units usually don't fall into that category, which is a good thing in terms of maintaining affordable housing units.
Okay, so, so anyway, if we can change that. And then the next sentence says, should there be any affordable units in the future? I think we should just take the any out. Can we say, should there be affordable units in the future, the town will work? I mean, saying any makes it sound like we'll never have any.
You mean, should there be any affordable units at risk?
Should there be, yeah, that's what I mean. Okay. And then, above that, you have a schedule where you say two outreach events per year throughout the planning period and ongoing.
That's on the prior program.
Right. I guess my thoughts are, I think it's, it's very difficult to achieve two outreach events. Don't you think one is really manageable and can be done, and can, can be done well, rather than trying to do two? I mean, some of the things that we're committing ourselves to make it really difficult to make it happen. And so, do we have, do we have to do two?
That's, it's really up to the town. This is not something that HCD has given us by...
I think, I think one of the things you could do is say one or more, and then you allow the flexibility of adding another, or, yeah.
Staff likes the idea.
Yeah. I just think we try to do all these things, and then sometimes maybe we, we don't have time.
I think it's more, it's more of a reality, given how understaffed we are.
Okay, so then, moving on to page... Okay, so, then, moving on to page H sixty-four, where the heck am I? Oh, I, I think a lot of these schedules are a little optimistic.
Oh, yeah.
And so, rather than already setting ourselves up to fail, I think I would say, on this schedule, say, establish program in 2016 and ongoing.
Excuse me, where, where are you now?
On page H sixty-four.
Okay.
At the bottom, where you have schedule.
Uh-huh.
Where you have by 2016, why not just say, do it in 2016? I was looking at all the things that need to happen in this year, for example, and then, things that would, so, I'm gonna have a few suggestions on schedule.
Sounds great, go for it.
And then, H sixty-seven, so, on, on the top of that page, the second bullet saying, providing funding support as possible and appropriate. So, I'm not sure what we're thinking of there, but later on, you guys talk about some programs where the town would buy housing and do all this stuff, and I really don't think the town should be in the real estate business. So, I don't know what we're talking about when we say, provide funding support as possible and appropriate, I personally would delete that bullet.
Any comment, Amy?
The example could be, I think the town has assisted, maybe not directly giving the funds, but on one of the projects that's maybe coming up with some study money for studies.
No, I don't think we have, we haven't given that funding. I mean, I personally think you take it out, because I was gonna add to the third bullet, so, I participate, I'm the member on the community development block grant program for the county and for Upper Ross Valley. And so, you've got all this other stuff, but I think I would add to that, that we, I would add, community development block grant funding program, that we coordinate on that as well.
So, if there's no objections, I got it redacted.
You know, I would give a different perspective on it, I think that it could be useful, like, for example, with Section Eight. It is very difficult to, for people to use Section Eight, but there are programs out there, when used in conjunction with a move-in to Section Eight, you know, providing some financial assistance for move-in costs, or something like that, that would help that rental assistance program, and the town could participate in that, you know, for example, if we have, you know, a town of Fairfax worker who gets a Section Eight unit, and they're trying to move into someplace in Fairfax, a little bit of financial assistance could conceivably make that happen.
So, we don't have such funds available, so I'm wondering what funds you're thinking of?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I don't have any.
We don't get CDBG funding to allocate.
Yeah.
But through, through that program, we can support, like, things like Peace Village.
So, can I just throw, can I just clarify something for a second, Barbara, maybe this'll give you a little more comfort? The second part of that sentence says, provide funding support as possible and appropriate. That pretty, that pretty much says it may not happen.
Well, I guess my concern is, for example, Richmond started a program where they thought they were gonna buy up for, properties under foreclosure, and within less than a year, they were gonna go broke, they didn't have the money to do it. And I know later on, you talk about something like that, which I have a lot of objections to. I don't see us ever being in that kind of position, so, to put something out there where we're not that kind of, we don't have that kind of power, Garrett, do you have a suggestion?
Well, if we actually do an in-lu fee program, you could have money, although, rather than providing, you could just say, consider. Then, if you have money, you wanna do that, great, I've done these before, they're not very easy, they're expensive. I'm not recommending it, but, there could be a point in time, if you have a hundred thousand in, in-lu funds, that you wanted to create some kind of rental deposit program, and you kick ten thousand for it, you could consider it. So, I don't think consider means you have to do it.
Okay, well, go ahead and put it in that way, then.
So, we'll leave it?
But I think you'd say, consider. Okay, thank you, Tony.
So, so the language there would be, consider private, providing funding support as possible and appropriate?
Yes, and then, adding the community development block grant.
So, we're still on that bullet?
Which bullet?
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm on the third bullet, where you have all this stuff about coordinate when we're in housing authority.
Okay.
You need to add the community development block grant program to that, which is a lot more money than the rest of those.
Got it.
Okay, sorry, folks, I'll try to speed through these, on H sixty-eight, on that schedule that you have at the top of 2015 to 2016.
Got it.
I think you'd be better off making that 2016 to 2017.
Fine with me.
Well, I was just, I was really looking at everything you were committing to, and I thought, I was trying to space it out, because I think you were cramming too much in the next couple of years.
And Amy, help me here, these are targets for the schedule, correct?
They are, and most of them, it's really up to the town, when you want them to have, when you want them to happen. The rezoning programs have happened within the, the draft.
Right.
For ACD, for this one, for the reasonable accommodation, this is something that ACD is very interested in having you accomplish, so, I would say, I wouldn't go later than 2017 on this one.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, and then, moving on to page H sixty-nine, I would add, in the middle of that page, you've got this thing about, in addition, the town may seek funding under HOPWA and other programs, I would add the community development block grant funding there, too. And then, that schedule at the bottom, where you talk about this stuff, again, I think I would suggest you go to 2016, 2017. I was, I figured that for us to get all the zoning done, which is the most important, we wouldn't have time to devote a lot of time to these other things.
Right.
So, I want it to be a little more realistic.
Okay, got it.
Then, on H, where am I, page H seventy, the same thing for that schedule, 2016 to 2017 made more sense to me. But, then, I'm getting to a big one on page H seventy-three. At the bottom of that page, you have policy H three point one point two. And you have, one, a density bonus up to twenty-five percent above allowable. Now, I could be wrong, but I thought what's required under the density bonus is ten percent.
Give me, what page are you going, again?
On page H seventy-three.
So, I think this is actually calling for an additional density bonus above what the state allows?
So, that's what I think we are doing, and I think the density bonus for the state is ten percent, is that correct, Amy?
No, it's actually, it varies, and it's up to thirty-five percent for certain projects.
So, what would it be for our town?
What would be for what?
You said, okay, so, the twenty-five percent seems higher than what is required, what would be required?
Well, so, the way density bonus works is, it depends on how many units in certain categories are proposed as part of a project. So, for example, if twenty very low units were proposed, then you'd get a certain percentage of density bonus, and I have to look up the state law to tell you what that is, but, under the best possible scenario, from the perspective of someone who wants affordable housing, you would get thirty-five percent density bonus under state law. But it is, it is imperative to adopt a density bonus ordinance that allows a greater bonus than that, and I think that's what this policy was calling for.
So, Amy, let me ask you for clarification, as I read this, I thought we actually were mistaken by not mentioning thirty-five instead of twenty-five. I thought we were trying to echo the state's maximum allowable density bonus, and when I got in.
If that's the case, then we would wanna change it to thirty-five, I think we talked about this on a previous call.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think this is talking about, I, I think. Yeah, no, I think this was intended to echo how we're going to use the incentive, what incentives to promote transit order development, and I think we were mistakenly thinking that the maximum under the state density bonus law was twenty-five, when it is thirty-five, and Barbara, it's a very.
It used to be twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, thank you, so, this should read thirty-five, and that, we could put a footnote, if you like, Barbara.
Yeah, we should.
The maximum, max, under state law, and again, it is a, the tables are very, very detailed. It, it comes down to the number of units in the different affordability ranges, and it gets down to the individual unit.
Okay, so, let's do a footnote, because I know that this is gonna raise some concern about, from some of our residents. Let's make sure we clarify what it's about.
And just one other heads-up, the state's density bonus law that we're trying to mirror here in our written policies is in effect right now.
Understood, I'm not, I'm not arguing against that.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying for the, for the, for the general public to understand, that it isn't something that we choose to have apply or not, it applies.
Okay.
I have a question, is there a minimum density bonus that the state requires? You're talking about the maximum density bonus of thirty-five percent, is there a minimum density bonus?
I believe it's twenty percent.
Twenty percent, okay, and what, what statute is that set forth in?
It's Government Code six five nine one five, and then, a couple of sections following that one.
One more time, six five.
I can get you, Peter, the, I've got quite a bit of boilerplate, and in fact, we have a subcommittee at the G-PIC that Chairman Green is on, that is actually drafting some recommendations to sort of create parameters as we go forward at the planning commission level in crafting our own density bonus ordinance to mirror the minimum state requirements. And so, we've done some data mining already, I've got the tables, I've got some background analysis. It's not an easy subject, it went into effect in nineteen seventy-nine, it's gone through several revisions, the most recent of which, I believe, was two thousand and six, and again, the tables are very articulated on the specific income levels, the number of units, and then, what that gets you in the density bonus.
Is, is there, can I ask staff a question, though, is there any?
I'm sorry, can you pull that mic just a little?
Is there any likelihood that this, this above the density bonus amount could be considered an inclusionary ordinance?
I'm not, say that once more, I'm sorry.
Okay, if, an inclusionary ordinance, you know, basically is requiring a certain percentage of low-cost units for a certain project.
Right.
Above and beyond, perhaps, what the state requires, so, could this, could this H three one two be considered a, an inclusionary ordinance? I mean, I'd like to see the language reflect that it just is mirroring what the state requirements are.
So, the.
Yeah, it's slightly different, but they are very related, there actually was a fourth case last year that ties the two together, together. We won't get into the details right now, but, basically, the inclusionary ordinance would be, like you just said, where you have a certain size project that triggers the ordinance, let's say, ten units, and then, a certain percent of those units would need to be either constructed as affordable, or some jurisdictions allow you to get a fee that goes into an affordable housing fund as an alternative. And density bonus is actually where a developer says, I am already planning on doing this many affordable units, and therefore, I would like to get more density for my project, and like Jim said, there are state specifics about how that math works. And then, they also are entitled to certain incentives that go along with getting that density bonus and building a certain number of affordable units, so, one of the big differences is that, under density bonus projects, units actually get constructed, affordable units actually get constructed much more often than under most inclusionary housing ordinances.
Right, and just, Phil, there's nothing on the table right now in terms of crafting an inclusionary ordinance, there's no.
Okay, so, I'm just concerned, this would not be construed, then, as an inclusionary?
Right, right.
Okay, great, that's, that was the clarification, thanks.
So, my concern is, since we're adopting this in our general plan language, that this is mandating us to, as a matter of right, include a density bonus of what, whatever number that is, whether it's the state maximum or the minimum. And I, I would actually advocate putting in the minimum number just to allow more flexibility, because, you know, we don't, we don't, I don't think we wanna tie our hands to maximizing the density bonus in our general plan, because that's, you know, that's not giving us flexibility later on. We can always increase the density bonus if a project warrants it, but, we're setting a floor here, and I think we should allow the floor to give us as much headroom as possible, so, I would advocate for whatever the minimum number is per the statute.
So, just to make sure I follow where you're going with this, this is just talking about incentivizing infill in the heart of town near transit, and it's saying, as part of that incentive, up to thirty-five percent above allowable, and that would then echo and parallel the state's maximum, and if we added a footnote saying, whereas the state's minimum density bonus is X, the maximum is thirty-five percent, and the town would, would negotiate that range with the developer, but, we, it's not within our purview to lower the maximum threshold, it's really stipulated already in law, with or without our own ordinance to that effect, based on these very detailed tables of affordability ranges, and then, the bonus you get. So, this doesn't in any way, no matter what we put in here, preclude state density bonus law applying on a project-by-project basis right now, so, I, I don't, I'm not sure I fully understand what you're saying, but by saying, up to thirty-five percent, it doesn't give away the show at all. It leaves within the town's purview what we will allow as a bonus, but it can't be below what the state stipulates, does that make sense, Amy, do you understand what I'm saying?
I think, I think with the footnote, though.
Because this is for a TOE project, you can set whatever bonus you want, because it's not an affordable, it isn't within the categories that the state law applies to.
Thank you, okay, all right, thank you, that helps a lot, then, yeah, then, fine, yes, you could do.
Then, to clarify, Amy, is there some state statute that says we have to do a density bonus of some X percent?
Based on affordability, but she's pointing out, she's pointing out that this, this policy.
It's not a classic work, that if a developer says, I wanna do a project that's gonna have ten affordable units in it, and I want to get a density bonus, you have to give them what the state law allows. And it is, there is another program in here, housing element, to adopt a density bonus ordinance, and that is also required.
And that required is twenty percent, correct?
Well, twenty percent is the minimum, yeah.
Right, so, what I'm saying is, this language here is mandatory, it says, the town will establish and provide the following incentives, a density bonus up to whatever percentage is, and I'm saying that, from a planning perspective, the more flexible thing is to adopt a number that allows us the most flexibility, and that would be the lowest number that's allowable by statute, rather than.
What about this, instead of doing that, because what I heard Amy just say was that we actually wouldn't have to if there wasn't affordable unit, so, what about saying this, one, a density bonus to the extent required under law, so, we don't even have a number in there.
So.
Well, but, the problem is, is that TOE projects are not addressed in state density bonus law. So, you're creating a different category, which is. So you're creating a, a different category, which is really.
So why not just strike?
It's not addressed under the state.
So why not just strike number one? Since TOD doesn't require a density bonus, why do we even have this policy as a density bonus? Because what we're talking about is transit-oriented development, period. What are we gonna do to incentivize transit-oriented development?
So that's, that's the point. I think Amy has helped us understand, at least in my mind, helped me understand, that this policy is not relative to the housing density bonus, which is based on affordability. This policy is separate in the sense that the town and this language would be incentivizing units in the transit-oriented development area through this incentive of density bonus, not tied to affordability. So that's totally within your purview. If you want to strike this, if you want to lower it.
So what you, if what we wanted to do is really say, what makes sense to incentivize if they're just TODs, is that I would change this to say, and I'm proposing this, transit-oriented development, period, and the, strike number one and just have the parking as the incentive. And then you could potentially, if something else works out, if they do a bunch of affordable stuff, then the density bonus fits.
So.
Can I, I, I want to add one other wrinkle. I'm not really sure what the first bullet actually means. What is a transit station?
A bus stop.
It's a bus stop. So six hundred feet, so we're talking about transit-oriented development within six hundred feet of every bus stop in Fairfax. Is that correct? Okay. So, and how does that interact with existing projects like Church Street and, I'm sorry, not Church, the Christ Lutheran Church and One Olima, or proposed projects like One Olima?
So Ten Olima, I don't think there's, there's a bus stop about a block away from there. The Lutheran Church, there's a bus stop right across, right there.
Does, well, would the, the density, if, if there was a density bonus on that site, would it mean anything to the twenty-two, the potential for twenty-two units at that site?
So the Ten Olima would be, if, if you wanted, if you do it as affordable, the density bonus would apply. It wouldn't have anything to do with the TOD. And the Lutheran Church, Peace Village, is gonna be affordable. So it doesn't have anything to do with the fact it's close to a bus stop. So they would still get a density bonus potentially on both of those.
Does that mean that they might develop additional units above what is in this chart? Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I mean, you know, that's, that's very hypothetical.
Potentially, they could.
You know, I mean, potentially, though, I mean.
I think the concern is that, all right, one, a lot of low-income households don't have access to private automobiles. They, they can't borrow them, they don't have them. And so the, the whole TOD movement was twofold. One was from a income affordability aspect, but then also the reduced carbon footprint. So if we can encourage developers to build around transit nodes, whether it's a rail station or a bus station, to facilitate getting out of cars using existing transit that exists, from the planning community, it made sense to try to encourage development. And by giving density bonuses in areas where maybe a developer wouldn't want to go in, but now a density bonus makes sense for them to go in, serves twofold. Move people along a transit corridor and provide more housing. I mean, we're, we're a town that doesn't have many parcels available for development, period. So by using sort of state TOD density bonuses in conjunction with, with affordable housing, it doesn't, it doesn't say it has to even be affordable. We could have market rate units go in and we're just allowing to have more stock. But we can tie it in in, in different ways that you can allow that density bonus and those could be set aside for, for low income. So you have market rate and low income together.
I think the problem is, is, you know, we, we had a big issue here last year. And the reality is there's not a lot of space to build housing, period. So to start putting in things that are just gonna be very controversial, that probably isn't even feasible, but if the reality is somebody wants to do transit-oriented development and they do it affordable, they're gonna get the bonus. So to have this whole thing be centered around that doesn't make sense.
Can I, I think, I think I, may I just say something? So I think I may have found a compromise, and this has been a good education for me on this. I was under the impression originally that we were trying to echo the state density bonus. And now all of a sudden, I've had an aha moment, thanks to Amy's clarification, that this isn't tied here to affordability. So what if we just left in number one and set a density bonus up to thirty-five percent above allowable based on the affordability criteria contained in the state density bonus law? In other words, in other words, that it's just stating the obvious, that if you build near transit, you know, you have the availability of density bonus law and you have, and we will also go further with trying to relax parking standards. So that we would be able to leave in the reference to a density bonus but tie it to the affordability.
I, I would disagree because they're different things. I mean, six hundred, within six hundred feet of a bus stop is basically all of downtown. And this is allowing a density bonus just because you're within six hundred feet of.
I'm saying, bring in the affordability.
Well, I, I think the simpler and more elegant thing would be to just strike number one. Because then that doesn't create this requirement to increase density just because it's within six hundred feet of a bus stop, which doesn't really have anything to do with affordability. And it, it's, it's not a mandate of the state. So I think it's simpler just to strike subsection one.
There is a, there is another, oh, I'm sorry. Just, just one, real quick, real quick. There is another tie-in, though. There is, there are some exceptions in SEQA for infill developments such as near bus stops for affordable housing, which provides an automatic, you know, more density bonus. So you're right. I think striking one is, is a good idea. And I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Barbara at this point. Maybe consider, you know, striking a lot of this or all of it.
I also, I, I do not like to put the sentence, the word density next to Fairfax. I don't think, I'm, I'm gonna go on board with Peter and some of Barbara. I don't, I don't think we need to do this. I don't need, we, we don't need to encourage developers to build more dense things. I would, I would keep it a minimum or completely strike it. I, I am very much against this whole thirty-five percent deal.
A reminder, though, is that our housing element isn't just about affordable housing. The housing element required by the general plan is to address all housing needs in our community.
I knew that. I didn't unaddress that at all. I'm just saying I don't want to hear developers getting more thirty-five percent, the ability to do thirty-five percent above whatever the minimum is. And, and I don't think we have to put that in either.
I have a compromise on top of everybody's that I think maybe gets us where we need to be. So I would change this to just say transit-oriented development, period. I would strike number one, but then I would have the footnote that talks about density bonuses for affordable housing. And I know that doesn't quite cover everything Roxanne is concerned about, but what we're saying is we want to encourage transit-oriented development. And then, rather than leaving in one with your compromise, which I thought was good, but if we just took number one out, but then we had a footnote next to that word that says land use arrangements and densities, and then have a footnote that talks about the density bonuses that go to affordable ratios, I think that would capture it, not completely what you wanted, Roxanne, but I think that gets us the middle ground. And it doesn't commit us to necessarily having these huge wind cup things.
Okay, can everyone live with that? Yeah?
Isn't it already part of the affordable housing? Isn't that a given?
Right.
Without having to even say, add it in?
But it's really talking about it in a footnote. So it's just reminding people that we want people to be reminded of the fact that if you should do this and if you, I mean, we kind of go back to what we've been talking about. We want to encourage low income, extremely low income. So we want to remind people that are looking at this, saying, oh, well, wait a minute, I can get that. I frankly am not really sure that it's gonna happen, but I think we should, we want to capture the same things that you were talking about, focusing towards extremely low, low income. And I think that brings it in, but it's not as much.
Can, can I ask for some flexibility? And please feel free to say no, but in, as, as an option to the footnote, if we can figure out some way in a parentheses in this language to add that? To add what you're talking about, reference to the caveat about density bonus laws could apply based on affordability?
Yeah, I, I personally think you could do it in a parentheses.
Okay.
And it's still, but I would change that header to just call it transit-oriented development, period.
And not put in a percentage.
No, I think you would just talk about, Jim, when you put this in the parentheses, I wouldn't put the specifics of the percentages, just whatever the right language is.
Right, right, got it. And strike density bonus in the header.
All right, so.
Strike the, the word and densities in the second line, the town will establish land use arrangements.
Okay.
And densities that facilitate, I would say, arrangements that facilitate energy-efficient public transit systems.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we, in the first bullet, change the word services to bus stops? The first bullet. The site is within six hundred feet of a transit station and/or bus stop.
What's a transit station versus a?
Well, I mean, yeah, that, that's the thing. I mean, six hundred feet of a bus stop, yeah.
There are, there are first bus stops and train stops.
We, we could just change it to transit stop.
And we also have shuttles.
Yeah, I like transit stop. That, that's a good idea.
You said, you said.
That's fine.
Transit stop?
It's transit stop.
Instead of transit station.
Get, get rid of services.
I think some folks are concerned that we might end up with a, you know, a transit station like in downtown San Rafael. I don't think so.
Okay.
That's near the freeway. This is not.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so moving on to H seventy-nine, unless somebody has something before then. So Jim, I don't think we're gonna meet your goal of two hours.
That's fine, that's fine.
Actually, I'll, I'll withdraw my first question, but I'm wondering here if that schedule, we should make that twenty-seventeen, just.
Above H five?
H seventy-nine? Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Okay, and then, H eighty-one, maybe I'm putting too much on twenty-seventeen, but I would change that to twenty-seventeen.
To twenty-twenty-three? Oh, to twenty-seven.
Next year's looking busy.
Which, uh, the six, two sixteen or the?
Twenty-sixteen, I would make twenty-seventeen.
On the top. And what about the schedule underneath?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm on page H twenty-one, I'm sorry, H eighty-one. H eighty-one.
The middle of the page, schedule, twenty-sixteen, I would just change it to twenty-seventeen.
Got it.
Then page H eighty-two, at the top of there, I think that's where we would add that language about in the non-wooey zone?
Where?
At the top of it, the fires.
Okay, and actually, I think that, I think you caught another, what we call in Hawaii, puka.
Puka?
Yeah, I think, we'll have to check that number of twenty-seven. But I, but I'll, yes, non-wooey?
Yeah.
Up to thirty percent.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question regarding this section. I, I have a, you had, you had referenced junior second units were inferred in this section, H six. Can you direct me to where that language is or?
No, it's, it's way at the end.
Oh, it's way at the end? Okay, I, I just want to make sure we address that.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on to H eighty-three, I was gonna ask a question. That first bullet on H, I already, no, I don't like that. On H eighty-three, where you've, are those first three bullets talking about junior second units or are those regular second units?
No, regular second units.
Okay, that's what I guessed. No, okay. Then H eighty-four, I guess I would change that schedule, the twenty-fifteen to twenty-sixteen to twenty-sixteen to twenty-seventeen, you know, unless you guys really want to do all that right away. I just think what we're gonna end up doing this year is it'll go into twenty-sixteen, and so I don't want to back us up.
Got it.
And then on the second unit incentives, I guess we're gonna be doing that in twenty-fifteen? Is that right?
I don't know, Creek Island is a little bit.
At the bottom of the page, that schedule, we are gonna be doing.
It's pretty tight, too. I think sixteen's better.
Okay. I mean, that was what I was gonna suggest, but.
Got it.
And then just a question on H eighty-five, and I'm sorry, this is getting late, but on this housing trust fund, have we talked to our finance director or our town treasurer to see if a housing trust fund could actually be established in the, in the budget?
Great.
Okay, all right. Okay, H eighty-six, this is where I have a problem. On two and three on the top of that page, you talk about buying down the cost of units, consider purchasing single-family dwellings. I really don't think Fairfax is in the real estate business and we should, we don't have that kind of ability. So what I would suggest is deleting both of those, but what I would do is say, the town should evaluate alternate options for use of the fee that would benefit affordable housing goals. So I don't know if other people agree with me, but this is the kind of stuff that you do in a place like Morgan Hill, where Garrett came from, where there's lots of resources, lots of money. These kinds of things, like Richmond buying houses, is, is, will make you go broke. And I think we can clearly evaluate other types of options for use of the fees.
Amy, any problem with redacting two and three?
No, these are purely town-driven programs.
And so Barbara, what was the language you would offer?
Well, I think, here is my suggested language, is the town shall evaluate alternate options for use of the fee that would benefit affordable housing goals.
Got it.
And then at the end of H eighty-seven, just a question, you say we're submitting this annual report annually to HCD in April. Would we do that? Is that required?
It's required.
Oh, okay, because I thought we weren't even gonna have the housing element adopted, so just wondering.
We would just reiterate the status, or we would reiterate where we are at that point.
Okay, so this is fine stat, all right. Okay, so then I got into HB forty-two. I'm almost done, so.
Eight, no, you're now in the appendix.
Right.
H, B as in boy.
B as in boy, forty-two.
Okay, give me a moment.
Okay, now I can't even find it. Hold on. Oh, on HB forty?
Hang on.
Go back to HB forty. That section that talks about citing facilities that serve homeless people and the stuff in the underlines, the town will amend the town code to allow homeless shelters, I think we want to say emergency homeless shelters.
Emergency shelters?
No, emergency homeless shelters is the right wording.
Seven?
Okay, and.
To allow emergency homeless shelters.
Right, that's what we're doing. Okay, so now on page HB forty-two is, I have language. The town has worked with the county on CDBG funding for Peace Village. Approximately four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars has been allocated through these efforts. I'm giving you new language.
So, so Barbara, can you?
So on, at the top of the page is, the first full paragraph that starts, the town has worked with Marin Workforce Housing Trust. I would add language that says, the town has worked with the county on CDBG funding for Peace Village. Approximately four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars has been allocated through these efforts. I have the doll, I have the. I have the, I have the table on that.
Good, got it. I might ask you for that language later on.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? I think it's a good thing to highlight.
Yeah.
I do, the state might enjoy seeing it.
I'm sorry?
The state might enjoy seeing it when they review this.
Yeah, this is one of the great things about being on that committee. We get to give out a lot of money to wonderful projects. So, and then on, so now I'm in HC, so C?
Oh, boy.
HC3, almost done.
I don't believe you.
Okay, so under the table, you have this thing that says, as part of the general plan update, the town rezoned all of the CH properties to CC. I think we proposed rezoning.
Yes, thank you. Got it? Thank you, goodbye.
All right, HC7. The sec, the last paragraph on this page, okay, it's, the third sentence says, in 2010, the town eliminated the sprinkler requirements. I think we eliminated them in the non-WOWE zone.
Right, non-WOWE, got it. And we also did it more recently, so we'll update that.
So then HC15, table C6, and actually, C7 and C8, which is on HC16. I believe we updated all those fees, it was either late 2013 or 2014, because I was on the council when we did that, so I think these tables need to be updated.
So we'll double check the fees.
And I would check all those three tables.
Okay.
Then HC18, on the, one, two, three, on the fourth bullet down, again, that's where we need to add the things about the sprinkler requirement in the non-WOWE zone.
I'm sorry, what page again?
It's on page HC18.
And which bullet?
The fourth bullet, where you're talking about the sprinklers. I think we did that in the non-WOWE zone.
Okay, got it.
Okay, and then on page HC19, the first and third bullets again talk about the fees, and I think those dates are wrong. I think it was 2014 when we updated the fee schedules.
Okay, we'll check the dates.
I know we did it when I was on the council.
We'll check the dates.
Almost done. HC28, question on the green building standards?
Yes.
I just have a question. Do we need a green building ordinance since we adopted the Cal Green standards as part of the new building, California Building Code that we did in 2013?
Forgive me, did you say, do we need?
Yeah, what this talks about is adopting a green building ordinance. Since we adopted the Cal Green standards.
Got it.
Do we need to do a separate green building ordinance?
Amy, feel free to jump in, but no, and the.
Is it better? I mean, if it's better, that's fine.
No, what, it is, it is a minimum point system, and we had discussed visiting the green point system and going beyond it if we wanted to.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I just wasn't sure if we'd already kind of handled it.
Right, and it, it's sort of, every time we start to address it and think about crafting the ordinance, the state lets out the new revision that gets more stringent itself and sort of preemptus us.
Yeah, okay, well, then, that's fine.
Would we want to change the language just to the town plans to consider a green building ordinance? Or we're still pretty confident we want to adopt one?
I think we have an error to correct here, because we did already change the program to not have it be an ordinance, under Program H5111. I think this may be language left over from last time.
So we'll fix that language.
Exactly, that you're discussing.
Okay, so I think because we adopted the Cal Green standards in 2013, we may have already gotten there.
Okay, we'll check it out.
Okay.
One that we could put in there is that the town may consider adopting further green building ordinance.
Well, I think Amy's saying that you got to go, they want to go back to the goal and make sure how they did it there. Is that right?
Well, it's really up to the town, but I'm seeing inconsistency right now in this paragraph and what Program H5111 says.
Okay, so why don't, why don't you look at that and then if we need to add something about considering one?
Yeah, I think it's nice to have that as aspirational language, because, you know, we can always do, exceed, you know, beyond what the state requires.
Well, let's make sure that we're clear that what we've already done is in this section. And then if we want to add that aspiration, it's not going to hurt us that we may consider. I think Roxanne also had that language.
We'll, we'll do our best to address your comments, and you'll be getting this at the other end in March anyway.
I was hoping not to have to talk so much the next time.
If, would, would.
And then, and then the, at the, the last page, HC29, you talk about the participation in the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. I was wondering if you want to also say and Marin Clean Energy, because we also participate in Marin Clean Energy and we're in deep green for the town and, you know, the Climate Action Committee is working on pushing that more, so.
Sounds great.
If, if you could add that. And then my last comment is really about the last pages that have the Housing Element Workshop comments, questions received, which is H31 through 33.
And there was a few typos we caught, which we corrected in your staff report.
Yeah, what I was kind of thinking was, what we have here is a list of comments and questions received, and what we don't have is that we considered those when we wrote this, that we tried to address these comments to the extent feasible, because otherwise it's a list that looks like we didn't even answer them or think about them. And so what I would suggest is, I mean, what I would have done if it was me was probably do a responsiveness summary to these, but in lieu of that, I would suggest that we have some language upfront that the town considered these questions in crafting the housing element update and the issues raised and to the extent feasible incorporated new concepts or something of that extent, because otherwise it looks like people came to a meeting, they said things, and where did it go? So I think we want to tie the loop with those.
Okay, I think, I think I got the gist. You want a summary paragraph explaining how these influenced the drafting of this document?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would, I think it would make people feel better about attending those forums as well.
Okay.
I have a few little.
Can you definitely do that?
Yeah, I have a few little edits that I'll tell you later, because.
On the list.
Yeah, it's not that long and they're very tiny, so.
Yeah, no, and I, I think if you compare it to what we, I went through myself and just took license.
No, I have a few little other things that I'm not going to spend everybody's time talking about here.
Ah, okay, okay, great.
So with that, I think we've succeeded in making most of everyone be very tired. I want to ask if members of the commission or the housing committee have comments before I open it up to public comment. Laura?
Well, I just.
You can pull, you can pull the mic towards you.
One that I noticed was on table B9, HB11.
H as in boy?
Yeah.
Is that the major employers?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we listed College Marin and Marin Community College. I think it may have been listed twice.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Different names.
Oh, the same thing.
I think they're the same.
Got it, okay.
I was surprised to see that Bay Area Sea Kayakers has 500 to 999 employees.
Yeah.
It's a real hands-on business.
And just one question on that table. So Fireman's Fund is gone. They went out. And I figured that this came from the California Employment Development Department, so I guess we just leave it. So I didn't raise it, but they don't exist anymore.
Right.
I have one.
What is the comment?
So the Fireman's Fund is gone?
We're on page, appendix HB as in boy, 11.
Yeah, I'm looking at the table, and we definitely, this data in particular, we would really like to edit to have it be accurate per local knowledge, because oftentimes it's not 100% correct. So the Fireman's Fund, we can take out?
Yeah, they're gone.
And we'll collapse the two references to the college.
You need to, I think she's, and you got the two references to Community College to put it together.
Yeah, so I just left all the Marin in.
Okay.
And the Sea Kayaks, I would take out.
The what, what? Bay Area kayakers?
Do they really hire 500 people?
Unless someone, I mean, has anyone heard of?
I have this data, it has to do with where people is based for a claim, it doesn't actually reflect the number.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. So maybe they are, I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to suggest Autodesk, it's an obvious large employer that probably should be listed.
I'd add them, I'd add Kaiser as a large.
Well, it seems like we might have some more to add, but I don't know if what we should do, rather than trying to research all these new ones, is maybe just have a caveat that these data were taken from this, and there may be other employers, but we, we made some corrections to it, because otherwise we're going to be doing research on Kaiser, how many employees they have, Autodesk, and any other ones that we can think of.
Okay, so I think we got the big ones, the Buck Center, Kaiser, Autodesk, Redact, Marin Community College, and Fireman's Fund. And put a caveat at the bottom on this is dated data.
Okay, so, and Phil, did you have another comment?
I had an overall comment when I looked at appendix HA definitions, which is page HA1, that it might be good, you know, obviously not for the state of California, but for the public reviewing this, to define the different, you know, A-BAG and the different kind of acronyms that are out there, that are mentioned throughout this, so that someone in the public can look at definitions page and see the good definitions they need.
Amy, did you get that?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, so any other members of commissions or, oh, I'm sorry.
And I want to thank you, Barbara, for this detailed review. Without you, we would, no, seriously.
This is great.
I just don't want us to get us where we were last year, where we had some errors and then that became a source of credibility issues for us. So I think everybody worked on this, but I'm, Jim's usually pissed.
No, I'm not. This is great, Barbara, I.
So David, what did you have?
Rely on your good work.
So the last thing, I, the only thing I want to contribute, since it's in my wheelhouse, where did you get the rental data?
Amy?
It says Craigslist, but, I mean, did you just take a couple of samplings or, I didn't know Craigslist had a, had a table.
Yeah, so we did what we call a point in time survey. It was done over several days in December, and we looked for listings in Fairfax. So it really is a snapshot and can't be taken as a, you know, your data, but unfortunately we don't have another source that's.
I may have some sources for you. I would strongly encourage to maybe modify that data, because it's skewed pretty high. And I think it's be better to have a more, there's a couple of sources, there's one called Marin Reports, and there's some other, other sources I could provide. That's my business, so.
Great. David, you just bought yourself some homework.
Okay, all right, I'll.
David's got some homework for us ASAP also, please.
If there's anything I can contribute, it's that.
And Barbara, I think Peter's got some.
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. You know, oftentimes advertised rents are not what they actually rent for, so it's sort of like real estate listings versus actual sale prices. And I just had one question regarding the staff report. I, because this had been discussed at a prior meeting, I would love to get the documentation either from the attorney or HCD, as far as the definition of government code, section The whole issue of identified or make available, it says in the staff report that identify has the same meaning as make available. And just from my own due diligence, I'd like to see that, because as an attorney, I may differ with that, so I'd love to see how that opinion was reached.
We can sit down with you and go over that. We had quite an in-depth period on that.
Sure, if you want to, or if you want to just email me the.
Well, I think we should, we're going to have to sit down and go through the document with you.
Okay.
Great.
I'd be happy to do that with you, Jim.
So with that, I'd like to open it up to members of the public, and I'm sorry that I took so long.
Barbara, can it be just one second before? Because David had asked earlier about the junior second units, so I just want to drive you to that spot for a second. It's on the screen right now on page, in the goals, policies and programs on H86. It's actually the last under goal, H6, before we get to H7. And this is the language regarding the second units that we cannibalize from Nevada's approach. And this was in response to what we heard at the prior meetings, including the workshop, which will go in that paragraph that Amy and staff will craft. But the basically, you know, review and adopt zoning standards and fees, it served to incentivize the creation of junior second unit standards, and fees considerations should include but not be limited to the following zoning standards to consider, conversion of existing bedrooms, no building expansion, 500 max size, wet bars with limitation on sinks and waistline, at waistline, facilities that are 110 volt, minute maximum, separate bathrooms permitted but not required, external access is required, no additional require, parking required, as long as the dwelling complies with the current parking standards, that's a big caveat, owner occupied and established by recorded deed restrictions, ministerial approval process, that means staff gets to approve it if it meets all these bullets, fee considerations, establish a minimum flat fee for planning entitlements, no town development impact charged, work with special districts, e.g. water and sanitary to reduce or waive fees. This is a big stickler, because this can get into tens of thousands of dollars very quick. And that's responsibility of planning, the planning department. And we would move on this right away, and we have actually a draft ordinance that, from Nevada, and we would come forward within the next year with, you know, recommended language and go through the normal process of starting with the planning commission and then going up to the town council. And this seems to have fairly universal acceptance and support. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for pointing that out. So with that, we only have a few members of the public left in the audience, but I will open it up to members of the public. Wendy?
This is on? Okay. First off, I want to say that there's a certain sense of frustration, making comments and edits is one thing. To make substantial changes in policy with before you have heard from the public seems inappropriate. And there were some policies that have been suggested to be eliminated, and it seemed like a dumb deal before we even had a chance to weigh in. So I hope that is not the case. Number, in the beginning of the meeting, there was, seemed to be a real sense from a number of members of both committees to want to have as much affordable housing as possible. Some of the policies that have been suggested to be eliminated are the very policies that would create affordability. I want to express strong objection to elimination of the policies that had to do with establishing land trust and buying down certain, and I don't have, my phone's back there and I don't have it in front of me, but it was two and three policies that had to do with the town contributing to buying down the cost of things and saying that Fairfax is too small to do that. The town of Bolinas, Point Reyes, and the San Ranamo Valley all have affordable housing, they own affordable housing, run affordable housing projects. They're much more tinier than Fairfax. If they can do it, Fairfax can do it. I really would like those policies left in place. I think they're important. They don't tie you into anything, they don't obligate you to anything, but I think they're very important policies, and I would highly recommend that you keep them. but I think they're very important policies, and I would highly recommend that you keep them. As far as the, the whole discussion around the density bonus for TODs, I'd like to make some recommendations. Number one, I think that, as far as the state density bonus law, one of the things about that law is that they get a 35% density bonus for only providing 20% of affordable housing. The city of Larkspur has upped that to 50% affordable housing. I would go and look at the language that the city of Larkspur, they've already passed their ordinance, so it's in place. I would look at their ordinance and see if you could mimic that, because I think that's what you're really looking for, is increasing affordability, and if you're already tied in with the state for 20%, why not make it something meaningful? And make it 50%, as Larkspur has done. Secondly, as far as transit oriented development, I think it was rightly pointed out that anywhere in Fairfax really, you know, that especially the opportunity areas, have a bus stop nearby. As someone who promotes transit oriented development, I don't think just having a bus, a bus stop nearby really translates into what really transit oriented development is. Transit oriented development is more than just being near a bus stop, it's about not having to own a car in order to access shops, services, employment, and transit. One of the, what I would suggest is in addition, that you would get a density bonus if there is a restriction on automobile ownership on the property. Because I think what you're really looking at is not restricting how many people and how many units, you want to restrict how many cars are on the road. And you would accomplish that by restricting the car ownership, and there's plenty of precedent for doing that. And I know plenty of people who live in Fairfax who don't own cars, so I know that it's possible. So that's my recommendation on that. And then finally, there has been talk about limiting the size of units, and there is some language in the housing element on that. But the idea is to kind of wait until, and putting that into the commercial, and I would really like to see some language that actually limits the size of units that's actually in the housing element itself. And I've asked for that before, and I want to ask for that again, because I think that, especially when you get to the rezoning, who knows when you're gonna get to completing the downtown element of the plan? Why not get this in place now, restrict the size, restricting the size of things like the CCs and some of the PDDs, so that at least you have some control of affordability in that way? So those are my recommendations, thank you.
Jessica?
Hello, I'm Jessica Green, and I happen to live in Fairfax. And I think it's very important that the people of Fairfax have something to say about this, when they get up and identify themselves as to where they live. I think it should be on the ballot, so that the people of Fairfax should have some, you know, real input on this, because I think a lot of people really don't know really what's going on. You can see there's nobody here, people don't know there's meetings, they don't know what's happening in the meetings, and that's a real concern for me. I had a question about, the, there was something about two for one density bonus. And I don't know how that applies to any of these units. Or if after they buy, you know, start these low income units, then they're gonna say, oh, well, we get the two for one density bonus, so they're gonna build two more market rate houses for each one. I don't know, you know, I mean, that was something that was talked about before, and I don't really know how it applies to these units. I mean, I think it's good to have some low income housing, but I think, you know, these, these changes that you were talking about are a good idea. You know, we'll start somewhere, do some low income housing, but I don't really think we need more market rate housing. I don't really think we need more cars and water use and all that stuff. And some low income housing is good, but if they're gonna have to start building lots of market rate housing, we have plenty of it. And, you know, I know you're talking about some kind of balance is required and all this stuff, but I think, I think you have to look at the true numbers after all this is done. What people are gonna request after they build their low income housing, how many, how many units are we really looking at here? And is there some way of limiting this thing where they can build market rate houses for every low income house? And I do think that there's plenty of cars with low income housing, because you can go to Marin City, you can go to any of the housing projects, you know, even at San Rafael, and there's, there's bunches of cars everywhere. I think it's a fantasy that everyone's gonna be riding a bicycle, because a lot of those people have to go to school, they have to go to work, and they're not all taking buses, and somehow they manage to get the money to get cars. So anyway, that's, that's my input, I think, I think it was really good that all the, the work that you did, Barbara, looking up all this stuff and actually reading this thing, and to me, to me, the changes sound good. Like I said, I'm not against low income housing, but I am, I am against a lot of density, because it's really gonna change the quality of life here, we're gonna have parking meters, we already have a lot of traffic, and I don't know what we're gonna do when the water runs out. So, anyway, there's a lot of issues, and, thank you.
So, and I will, we have Alexander wants to make some comments. I think also, Jim, when we present this at the special council meeting, it may be a good idea to discuss the density bonuses and how those work, because it's, I think it's a very confusing area. Thank you, Jessica. Alexander?
Thank you. Couple of comments, I often find myself agreeing with Wendy, but I did like her.
Can you speak in there?
Yes. I did appreciate Wendy's suggestion that perhaps the housing element itself include specifications or maximum sizes somehow for, for housing units. I think that would be helpful as a way, if that's permissible by state law, that would be a way of moving things in the direction of truly, what I call truly affordable housing, by which I mean very low income and extremely low income, I think that's the greatest need. And given that building any more housing is gonna increase traffic congestion, parking problems, and so on, I think we need to skew things very much in that area. By the way, there were times I wanted to comment earlier as people were speaking, but of course I couldn't. But I did make this comment at another meeting. There is a state program, and perhaps Amy knows about it, that allows constituencies to trade their various numbers of units in different categories with one another. And I know in Marin, there are certainly some communities that would prefer to have less affordable housing and more market rate housing, if at all. And my sense is many of us in Fairfax would prefer just the opposite. So that would be a formal mechanism that the town could investigate to do a lot of that. And then we wouldn't be playing these numbers games quite so much. I realize there's a difficulty because of the RENA requirements and so on, so we have to meet all these numbers, the bookkeeping system. But it does create problems for the townspeople, in that, you know, the numbers that are in the housing element all have to do with what's allowable, and in this case, if they're gonna be PDDs, will be allowable by right. And then if they are truly affordable housing, then there are gonna be density bonuses on top of that. But those never count in the numbers, but when they're built, and for developers, it's more income for them if they can pack in more, more units. When they're built, the congestion problems and the parking problems will increase. And there should be some way to take that into account, I don't know how to do that and still comply with the state law. But there has to be some way to do that, so that we're talking about the real world, rather than these artificial numbers, which are gonna be increased by 20% up to 35%. So something wrong with that. And just one or two other things that I wrote down along these lines. I said, "Statistics in the 2013 housing element show that most working residents are commuting out, not in." The draft element refers to, quote, "workforce housing" for Tenolima, but nowhere defines that phrase. The 2013 housing element update did refer to it as constituting up to 180% of area median income, which for a family of four, even back then, was over $185,000 a year. Is this really the income level we should be accommodating, given very limited opportunities to add housing? If we truly want to link housing and jobs in Fairfax, why not instead envision the housing at Tenolima as being entirely for very low income and extremely low income households, and with enough off-street parking for all residents? After all, most of Fairfax's workers are in retail, and the largest employer in town is Good Earth, most of whose employees work part-time and are in those lowest income categories. I had a number of other comments, but just to say that I appreciate the things that were, that were discussed in terms of green building. I have mentioned in a couple of other venues that I would like to see the town move in the direction of an ordinance for multifamily housing development, that is, anything greater than two units. That would move us to or in the direction of zero net energy use. At least, things that take us very close to that. And I think that it's a way that we can merge two things that we really want to have happen in Fairfax, which is more truly affordable housing and also more truly green housing. In terms of both conservation techniques, renewable energy, and so on, it's much more efficient to have those done at the time that the building is taking place, rather than retrofitting. I think that's all I really need to say tonight. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexander. So, I don't, I think one of the things we should do when we do the special Town Council meeting is maybe, to the extent feasible, address some of the issues that Alexander brought up as well. And with that, I'll bring it back to the Commission, the Committee. Before we adjourn, I think I may have found an error in the resolution, because I know it's gonna go to the Planning Commission, but I want to ask if there's any other comments people want to make before I just point out what I think is an error in the, one of the wheres.
I just have a couple of comments after hearing from our community. One, I concur with Wendy, our housing element is really our plan, our general plan for the future, where we want to go. And I see your concern, and we don't want to be in the business of owning and operating affordable housing as something that the town does en masse, but we do have in-lu fees that we're looking at putting in. So how can we use those fees in the most effective manner to leverage resources, maybe with other monies or other funds that can come in? Public-private partnerships to allow more housing, and again, like the clam housing that's taking place out in Point Reyes, there's a lot of creative solutions around the country of different land trusts that are being used to ensure that the housing stays in place. So I think that's a concern, I think it's something that we'd like to keep open as something, maybe we're not gonna do it now, we're not gonna do hundreds and hundreds of units, but to have the idea of how can the town work to encourage more affordable housing that we as a town have control of. I think, I think that's something we want to keep a look at. Alexander talked about transfer development rights, and I haven't seen it much really in affordable housing. We often use it for protecting historic buildings and things where somebody could tear it down and add four more stories in a city, and we want to protect somebody's historic home, and so we transfer those development rights to another parcel that can build at a higher density. I think there's some creative solutions that can be had with that, I'm not sure in the affordable housing, nothing comes to mind that I've seen in research. My other concern is thinking about limiting housing size as a way to ensure affordability. And of course, if we build an efficiency unit, a 400, 500 square foot unit, it's naturally gonna be lower cost. There's a lot of families here that can't afford to live here, not just single persons. Families of mom, you know, single moms that we have in here with one child, two child. A 400 square foot unit, by HUD standards, is overcrowded and not sustainable. So I think we still need solutions for affordability for families of two and three and four, and not just a single person. And I think some of the in-lu fees and some other public-private partnerships that have been done to ensure affordable housing for households, is something that's a little absent in here. And I think that's something in our next phase we want to try to consider.
I also want to address what Wendy was talking about. I think we covered, I would have, I would have also preferred to keep those two parts in, in the wording that it was in, but taking them out, we still left it open as a possibility to invest or co-invest in a, in building something with the town and maybe somebody else. So it was just a matter of finessing the wording, I was good either way. But I liked, you know, I personally liked the first thing that, yeah, we're open to do that.
So bringing it back, I just want to make a comment on what I think is an error in the resolution. So the third whereas says, "On August 5th, 2014, the Town Council made certain additional revisions and additions to the amended housing element." Well, I pulled out the Town Council agenda when we actually did that, and that was September 17th, 2014. So I'm not sure what August 5th, 2014 is referring to, but the meeting where we made those changes and approved all those was September 17th, 2014. So I think August 5th is just an error.
So we'll check it.
Yes. And other, that was all I saw in the resolution. So if we've gone through the public hearing, I think now, what do I do, Jim? I say?
Adjourn the Affordable Housing Committee.
Well, Mayor, actually, I wanted to address a couple of the comments that Alexander and Wendy Callens raised, if I may.
Okay, well, part of what we do is we don't get in a debate with people as to the comments they raise.
No, I'm not gonna address it to them, I wanted to ask Amy and Jim for some clarification on a couple of points that they raised.
Okay, go ahead.
And also, I'd also like to echo adding back that aspirational language, and we could make it more aspirational for attempting to fund affordable housing. And.
Just to clarify, what I suggested was taking out those two things, but putting in language that talks about the town evaluating options to further use funds to support affordable housing goals. So those two options, which got us into real estate mode, may ultimately become something we want to do, but to put those two options in there right now without further evaluating other options which may be more usable. So that was my suggested language, was.
So, might I offer, since there's been a couple of follow-up statements to the public statements, and by the way, it's not like the open mic where there's talking off the subject, so you can engage. But, if I'm not mistaken, but if you have a difference of opinion among the two bodies, I mean, of the people representing the two bodies here, you could always take a vote amongst yourselves on what you want to do with regard to these two things, leaving it in or not. That's just your prerogative.
Okay. But I did want to ask about the possibility of putting in deed restrictions on limiting car ownership, if that's a feasible option to do, and where would that be done? Would that be done in zoning, or I guess, I guess that could be done on a project-by-project basis?
It could be done, and help me here, Amy, if I'm off the reservation, it could be done in both, in the zoning ordinance and/or in the project as it comes through entitlements.
Sorry, was it limiting size, was that a question?
No, limiting the parking.
In other words, Wendy, I think if I understand her correctly, was suggesting that you could, you know, as a matter of granting a project, impose a deed restriction that residents couldn't, you know, have a car registered to their name, I guess is that. If you, you know, if you really wanted to have some kind of, you know, truly transit-oriented. And I'm just wondering if that is something-
I don't believe I've ever seen something, even a project that says you can't own a car, but there definitely are lots of projects that do not give park space to residents.
So, can I chime in?
If someone else knows of that kind of project, I'd be interested in your part.
Yeah. No, I think we actually, I think we asked the town attorney about this, and we can't, I don't believe that the town can impose that restriction, if I'm not mistaken, but an owner of the property can. And then there might be wiggle room through a development agreement when you're working out a particular project and the agreement therein. I think you might have some latitude for it. But it's not something I think we want to visit in this document.
Okay. It's just an interesting idea. I wanted to just get some clarification. And then the issue of limiting perhaps the size of units in the zoning itself, is that something that can be done at the zoning level? And I'm not advocating a, you know, a limit of, you know, say 400 units, so that only single apartments get built, but, you know, there's probably some number that would work for, you know, two-bedroom or three-bedroom units and in the spirit of keeping them affordable for families. And I'm wondering if that's something that we should consider doing in the zoning, or in, or, yeah, is that, that's something to do in the zoning?
So, how about this?
If I may, you know, this is exactly the type of sort of debate or discussion we get into with the planning commission. And I, briefly, I would just say, let's not regulate that here or in the ordinance, but take it on a case-by-case basis in the planning commission, you know, and perhaps appeal to the town council if that happens. Because that's something, it's rather subjective depending on the property.
You know, sometimes using zero lot line zonings to allow for homes without all the side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks are some of the creative ways that some communities try to use infill development to be able to get more housing for families in place on tight spaces.
So it sounds like, I think Phil's suggestion was taking that on a project basis rather than putting that into this document seems probably the best way to approach it.
Well, I'm just trying to consider, you know, if we are rezoning a large swath of, you know, the commercial property, and I just wanted to consider that as a possibility, is that something that can be done in the zoning ordinance?
And again, that, you're saying, is it within our purview, within the zoning ordinance update, to address the properties that would be presumably converted from CH to CC, creating a maximum unit size? Based on the number of bedrooms, or?
Yeah, something along that line. And is that permissible under HCD?
Yeah, and again, I think what Peter's asking, Amy, is if we then, moving forward in the update to the zoning ordinance, adopted language limiting the size in whatever way we craft it, are we going sideways on our agreements in this document?
No. The thing they really need to commit to doing is the price of a church site in the Tenolima, and you have a little more leeway on other sites.
That's right.
As long as you meet your numbers.
That's right, that's right. Because those two base densities, and those two base densities are the only ones, they blanket our affordability range in the lower areas. Thank you for that.
Okay, so with that, I-
And did we get closure on, what would you like staff to do with two and three that were up for elimination with the other language offered?
Do we want to take a vote on that, or do we want to just go forward with the suggested-
Page 86.
86?
H86.
Yeah, I thought that we had agreed on amended language.
Well, I think there's some discussion still going, so I'm just asking point of order.
Okay. I mean, my suggestion would be take those two out, because they're putting us into kind of a real estate box. And that's not to say that it wouldn't be something that we would come to at some point in the future. But we have the first bullet in that talks about working for Habitat, for Humanity, or something like that, and then have another bullet or another number that talks about the town evaluating other options for use of the fees that would support affordable housing goals or objectives. And that way, you leave yourself open to exploring any multitude of options.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay. So it sounds like-
Yeah, I feel comfortable with the changed language, but I do want to say that, you know, I completely agree with Wendy, you know, about our goals in using funding for affordable housing. But I just think this gives us more flexibility. And also, we have to be cognizant of the lack of staffing, that we have to do a lot of complicated work. So we need more flexibility to find an easier solution for accomplishing the same thing.
So it sounds like the planning commission, people who'd raised some concerns are okay with it. I'm hearing most of the Affordable Housing Committee is okay with that change. I see myself, Mallory, David, so that's, Peter, are you okay with that change?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's all, it is all aspirational. I see the problem with potentially putting that language in, so I'm okay with it.
It doesn't say we can't do it.
Right. It's just saying we're evaluating very different options. Okay, so with that, let's adjourn the Affordable Housing Committee. I want to thank everyone from Affordable Housing and Planning Commission to work so hard tonight. And with that, we'll adjourn Affordable Housing, and I will turn it over to Chair Phil Green for the planning commission.
And even though you're adjourned, if you wouldn't mind just sitting tight for a moment, because after this motion, I just want to articulate the next steps.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. I think we had a really good session. I think the edits are out there, and hopefully they'll all be made really well. So I believe it's my purview and privilege to make a motion.
No, you asked for a motion.
Oh, I want to ask for a motion. Ask for a motion based on the recommendations, I mean, I would recommend myself, recommendations of the staff report.
And one caveat, the, we will check the date in the third whereas, to change it to September 17th, if that's the date that it's referencing.
Right. And the motion should address the fact that, you know, we're adopting this update as amended, corrected, and otherwise annotated.
Actually, you're adopting a resolution recommending that the town council accept the housing element update draft.
Okay, so whoever makes the motion, that's the language.
I will make a motion for that the planning commission recommend the town council approve the 2015 housing element update with the changes that were noted in our meeting today, and the changes to the date of August 5 to September 17, if records indicate that on Resolution 15-05.
And I'll second that.
You can't.
I can't second.
You're just a chair now. Let the record show Esther seconded it.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show the four planning commissioners voted unanimously, and the record show that Tony's still on the Affordable Housing Committee, but we do have vacancies on the planning commission right now. And now, Mr. Chair, oh, let me just finish by saying, please, that we have a targeted date for taking this forward to the town council on March 18. It will be duly noticed. And then presuming that the town council accepts the draft with these changes, it would be sent up to HCD for their maximum 60-day review. We're hoping it's a very fast turnaround, right, Amy? And, did you hear that, Amy? Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to do-
That's okay.
I hope so.
Yeah. And then after we get the document back with comments from HCD, we will hold another planning commission meeting. We will entertain that document with the comments from HCD, and we're going to target the regular April meeting date of April 16 for the planning commission, or if necessary, a special meeting. And then assuming that all goes well, we would take it up to the town council, hopefully on their regular meeting of May 6, or again, if necessary, at a special meeting date for final adoption. So without, having said that, that concludes the review, and thank you all so much. So you can adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Just kidding.
From the planning, no, from a member of the planning commission?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. We'll talk tomorrow.
[music]